Good afternoon, everyone. I'm delighted that we're at Penn State Milton S. Hershey Medical Center for our meeting today. We had an opportunity to tour the Penn State Hershey Children's Hospital this morning, and were able to meet several medical and nursing students over lunch. That combined with the success of THON last month really has a way of energizing you. Our very special thanks to Dr. Hal Paz for hosting our meetings. We decided that we like it so much here that we'll make this an annual event instead of just once in a while, so we'll be here next year as well. I want to begin our meeting this morning, or this afternoon, by calling Dr. Paz for a few words of welcome. Dr. Paz?
Thank you very much, Chair Peets. It's a great pleasure on behalf of our faculty, students, and staff at the Penn State Hershey Medical Center and our College of Medicine to welcome all of you to this campus for the Board of Trustees meeting. We have been thrilled and honored to have the trustees here last night and this morning, and we hope that this is a very fruitful and productive meeting. So, thanks all and welcome, and we are delighted that you're all coming back next year as well.
I'd like to welcome the University Faculty Senate Officers with us here today, and have them stand, please. For a couple of them, this is their last meeting. Daniel Hagan is the Chair and is Professor of Dairy and Animal Science. This is Dan, outgoing Chair. Larry Becker is Chair-elect and is Professor of Law. Okay? And Pam Huffnagle is the Secretary. Pam's a Senior Instructor in Education at Penn State Dubois. This is the last meeting for the Senate Officers in their respective positions, as the elections of officers will occur prior to our next meeting. Our special thanks to each of you for your role in the shared governance of our university, particularly to Dan and to Pam, outgoing. The student representatives with us at our meetings are John Lozano, President of the Graduate Student Association. John, maybe you can stand. There he is. T.J. Bard, who's the President of the University Park Undergraduate Association. We received a summary of the accomplishments of the organizations represented by these students, and I have to say, the energy and enthusiasm is remarkable and commendable. This will be the last meeting for John and T.J. as representatives as well, and both T.J. and John have indicated that they would like to make some brief farewell remarks. So, I think we'll go with the undergraduate first. T.J.?
Thank you. As team members of the Board of Trustees, I thank you for the opportunity today to speak. I have been honored to serve as the President of the University Park Undergraduate Association this past year. I can say that I never imagined what the year had in store for me when I assumed office in late March. However, despite this past year, I have never been prouder to call myself a Penn Stater. I can also honestly say with conviction that there is no closer group of almost 95,000 people in this world than the student population attending Penn State this year. We are a student population more rooted than ever before in the values and founding principles that our university was created on more than 157 years ago, and much of that is due to the leaders within our vast Penn State community. First, President Erickson, I want to sincerely thank you on behalf of the undergraduates at University Park for your unwavering service to this institution. You stepped up during a time when we needed leadership most, and you have proven to the entire world what it truly means to be a Penn Stater. I'm incredibly grateful for your willingness to think outside of the box, your ability to try new approaches to student engagement, and most importantly, your openness to change. The students have such a phenomenal ally in you. I hope that the leadership of this institution continues to recognize the importance of the student voice at Penn State. The majority of you sitting in this room today were once students. Students that went on to become the alumni that formed the fabric of our worldwide Penn State community. Students who often even come to service faculty, staff, and the leadership that governs the Pennsylvania State University. It is the students paired with this faculty and this staff that formed the very lifeblood of our institution. I am grateful for our new board leadership and their efforts to listen and incorporate student voices more dynamically within the university. I would like to thank Chair Peets and Vice Chair Masser also for their efforts to increase student engagement more than it ever has been before. I think there are many important steps being made that the students truly do value. However, I trust that there are many more to be made in the time that is yet to come. I hope that the students of Penn State are able to gain a greater familiarity of the board, its operations, and most importantly, with you, the dedicated trustees that devote so much of their time to Penn State. We have much growth yet to do moving forward in these next couple of years. Growth that can be good and change that is crucial for the future. However, I know with strong leadership, we will always remain a world-class research institution dedicated to being the most student-centered university in the nation. I am grateful to have done my part representing the student voice at Penn State. I am grateful to have had this opportunity within the board, and most importantly, I am grateful to be a Penn Stater. Thank you.
What a great statement, T.J. Thank you very much for that. And now, Tom.
So, I don't have anything prepared in writing, but I've been spending a lot of time thinking about exactly what I was going to say, because this is my ninth year at Penn State. This is my second year as GSA President, and this is the first of many goodbyes for me at the university. And as I look around this room, I see the people who are here in front of me here at the board table, at the President's Council in the front of the room, and I think about all the great memories I've had working with so many of you over the past two years. And especially, last year, when I made my remarks, the crux of it was, "I'll be back in a month. I don't plan on leaving. This time, I am." And I just want to thank everyone in this room for all the opportunities. The chance to serve the graduate population here, the undergraduates when I was still in that role as well. Penn State, really, to me, over these last few months, is... I've had a chance to think about what it's meant to me and what all I've been able to take away from that. And it's given me everything that I have right now, and I never really can repay that. I'm very thankful for the opportunity to serve, to work with all of you, and to continue to swell Penn State's pride going forward. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, and good luck, Tom, as you head out after nine years. That's...it might be a record, so that's terrific. Wonderful. So, welcome also to David Gray. While he was with us for most of the meetings in January, David officially began his responsibilities as the Senior Vice President of Finance and Business on February 6th. So, welcome, David. Please stand as well. And we look forward to working with you, David, for the future, for sure. Before proceeding with the day's business, I want to take a moment and have us all reflect on what Penn State means to our local community and to our state. Since beginning my service as Chairman of the Board, I've been awestruck by the commitment of our students, faculty, staff, and alumni to ensuring that Penn State continues its role as one of the leading academic and research institutions in the world, and as an example for others to follow. A month ago, I went to THON and saw our students raise more money for pediatric cancer care than they ever have before. I've met with diverse members of our community, and all are deeply committed to making Penn State the best it can be. I've been working with a president who took over at a time when we needed him most, and who's serving Penn State remarkably well. And I've been working with a Board of Trustees who selflessly devote an incredible number of hours for no benefit other than helping their alma mater. In the midst of strife, Penn State has come together as a community. I could not be prouder to be part of it. When Keith and I took office back in January, our entire community had been through a very difficult experience together. Keith and I pledged that we would ensure that Penn State helped the victims get justice and care. We pledged that the university would be more open and transparent, and we pledged reform. Our work today will demonstrate the progress we are making on each of those fronts. We will now proceed with the business of the day, and I'd like to remind everyone to turn off your cell phones so that we can direct our full attention to the issues at hand. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and Mrs. Ammerman, will you please call the roll?
Trustees Alexander?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
Arnell? Broadhurst? Clemmons?
Here.
Corbett? Dambly?
Here.
Devini?
Here.
DeBarredanis?
Here.
Fraser? Garben?
Here.
Gregg?
Here.
Hayes?
Here.
Heatherington?
Here.
Hens?
Here.
Huber?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Corey?
Here.
Lubert?
Here.
Muster?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Peets?
Here.
Riley?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Silvis?
Here.
Strumpf?
Here.
Sui?
Here.
Serma?
Here.
Tamalas?
Here.
Branstadter?
Here.
And Junker?
Here.
Great. Thank you. So, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meetings of the board held on January 20th? May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. At this time, I'd like to ask President Erickson to present his informational report.
Thank you, and good afternoon. I want to begin by thanking T.J. Bard and John Lozano for your outstanding service in your respective roles. It's been a great pleasure to work with you both, and I would add Peter Corey and his role as President of CCSG. You and our other student leaders at Pennsylvania have just been remarkable in your leadership. You've taught me a great deal over the past several months, over the past couple of years, actually, and you certainly leave with our best wishes as you move on. So, thank you very, very, very much. Well, welcome to all, to our Hershey campus. I want to begin by thanking Dr. Paz and his colleagues for their hospitality over the past two days. This has been a great opportunity to explore how this campus contributes to Penn State's mission of teaching, research, and service, as it fulfills a critical need for health care and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Many of us had an opportunity before lunch to visit the construction of the Children's Hospital. I'm sure Dr. Paz will be talking about more, but what a magnificent facility that will be, which will extend the great medicine that Penn State provides for children in central Pennsylvania and well beyond. Dr. Paz will update you on many aspects of the Milton S. Hershey Medical Center and the College of Medicine, so I'm going to focus on other news. One of the most pressing orders of business is the discussion surrounding the state appropriation to Penn State. This is indeed a very tough budget year for Pennsylvania, and I don't envy the task of Governor Corbett and the General Assembly in producing a final budget. But I'll continue to make the case that public higher education is at the core of the state's economic future. Last month, I testified before the Pennsylvania House and Senate Appropriations Committees, and I was encouraged by the level of support for Penn State and the needs of Pennsylvania families. Beyond the perennial question of when we will revive the Penn State-Pitt football rivalry, much of the discussion revolved around what I'll call the three Es: education, the economy, and ethics. Today, I'll touch upon each of these three areas. First, let's look at the demand for a Penn State education. Applications for admission continue to come in at record numbers. To date, we've received about 106,000 total applications. Graduate applications are up 4%, and there's strong growth in international applications, with international undergraduate applications up by 23% and international graduate applications up 10%. There's also continuing interest in our award-winning World Campus, with applications for first-time and advanced placement admission up 15% for a summer or fall start. Overall, undergraduate applications and acceptances are tracking historical patterns and trends. Paid accepts for University Park are running very close to last year, and while there is some early softness in some Commonwealth campus deposits, there is still a long way to go in the campus recruitment cycle. Most of the year-to-year difference is accounted for by three of our largest Commonwealth campuses, where enrollments have been most robust during the past decade or more. A frequently asked question from our legislators is what Penn State is doing to help our students complete their degrees in a timely fashion. The Chronicle of Higher Education just released a comprehensive, easily searchable database of graduation rates for 1,251 colleges and universities. I'm pleased to note that Penn State University Park ranks number one among Pennsylvania public schools and fifth among national flagship public universities for the six-year graduation rate. Nationwide, University Park is in the top 5% of public colleges for our four-year graduation rate and in the top 2% for our six-year graduation rate. What's more, we're always trying to improve completion, and this year, we launched a new initiative called the May Master. This month-long intensive session is designed to help students catch up on coursework or accelerate toward degree completion while still allowing ample time during the summer to look for jobs and internship opportunities. Of course, one of the most important ways we're contributing to the education of our students is through our outstanding faculty. Each year, our faculty is tapped for membership in leading professional organizations. This year was no exception, and the group shown here was named to the American Association for the Advancement of Science. This is the world's largest general scientific society, and this honor is bestowed based on the scientifically or socially distinguished efforts to advance science or its applications. In addition, three Assistant Professors, Scott Phillips, Nathan Gemelke, and Carl Schwade, were honored with the 2012 Sloan Research Fellowship. This is one of the most prestigious awards for young faculty, and it predicts a bright future for these scholars. As Dr. Paul Jasco, President of Sloan Foundation, said, "Today's Sloan Research Fellows are tomorrow's Nobel Prize winners. These outstanding men and women are responsible for some of the most exciting science being done today." Our faculty are also responsible for cultivating the talents of our students. I had the pleasure of hosting the President's Concert at Heinz Hall in February. This was a wonderful showcase of some of Penn State's most talented musicians under the direction of world-renowned faculty. I hope you'll be able to join us next year. Now, I'd like to show you a video about another research project that demonstrates how far Penn State faculty will go to engage students. This video is part of a new series on the Big Ten Network that began this winter and is the result of a Big Ten Initiative chaired by Bill Mann, our Vice President for University Relations, to promote university research expertise.
The Lunar Lion Team believes that the development of new space exploration technology can lead to new discoveries with far-reaching applications.
We're looking forward to space exploration and space usage in the future and trying to point Penn State in that direction, and this project is a very good opportunity to start that.
The team has until 2015 to fund, build, launch, and land a vehicle on the moon and perform a checklist of tasks upon arrival.
When we get to the surface of the moon, we have to play back from the spacecraft eight minutes of high-definition video and provide a panoramic image of our landing site. Once we've done that, there's another requirement where we have to take off and land another spot 500 meters away.
No spacecraft has landed on the moon since the former USSR's lunar 24 robotic mission in 1976. And the Penn State team faces another challenge, one they see as a benefit.
There are universities and researchers associated with many teams, but we're the only team that's led by the university.
I'm proud of Penn State to be the only university-led team. It just shows us just the drive and perseverance that students do have.
I had to put my own future on the line, and I turned down a job offer I had so I could stay and work on the project.
It's really a collaborative project that involves the College of Engineering, College of Science, College of Earth and Mineral Sciences, and Information Science and Technology, as well as the Applied Research Laboratory.
We have access to students. Students who otherwise might go into computer programming to get into the gaming world or into internet business are going to look at this and see an opportunity to work on an interplanetary mission, to send something out to the solar system, out to the moon. Where else are they going to get to do this as a student? When we build this spacecraft, we're going to have the benefit of a lot of the resources here at Penn State, so I know that this mission is going to be the lowest-cost landed mission to the moon in history.
Each member of the 20-person Lunar Lion Team is hard at work to meet the goal of their 2014 launch date. Step one involves designing their mode of transport.
The spacecraft that we've come up with is about a meter and a half in diameter, and it's only about 190 kilograms, all told. We went for small, we went for straightforward. The next stage is to go to a detailed level of design for the body of the spacecraft. Once we've gotten through the design phase, it gives us about a year or two to build and do the preliminary testing on the spacecraft, and then about six months for what we call environmental testing. The most challenging part of this mission is going to be that two-minute period when we're firing our thrusters and landing on the surface of the moon.
I am working on the part that prevents us from crashing into the moon. So, when we approach the moon, we're going to be going over 5,000 miles per hour, and we need to very suddenly come to a stop using a solid rocket engine, and the timing is a critical issue.
With the objective to keep the spacecraft simple and light, the Lunar Lion Team decided to make their vehicles solar-powered. These specifications are explored in the Penn State Student Space Program's lab.
We use solar power because it is one of the most readily accessible power supplies in space, and it's also really cheap compared to any other options you might have.
As the spacecraft designs and development move forward, the Lunar Lion Team has already identified a landing spot on the moon, a place familiar to those who were a part of the last human-moon mission in 1972.
So, we said, "All right, well, why don't we just, for the purpose of our study, pick one of the Apollo landing sites as our landing site?" And we already have a first-order, three-dimensional map of the landing site that we've chosen on the moon.
I feel that we're going to win this competition because we're focused on strictly objectives. We're not worried about any flashiness. We have the minimal amount of subsystems that do the job necessary. So, as long as we're focused on our goals, focused on our requirements of our system, I think that can't be beat.
The Lunar Lion Team has goals of not only winning the competition, but advancing the goals of the university.
When we win this prize, we're going to take that $20 million, and we're going to turn it into scholarships for students in technology and science. By establishing these scholarships, it'll be a means for Penn State to continually recruit the best and the brightest in science and engineering.
The Google Learn X Prize is only the beginning for Penn State, and it really will give us the credibility to pursue future missions.
We're going to be able to build for Penn State a capability to, down the road, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 50 years from now, be a resource for private space research, for space exploration, in a way that few universities can do today.
Remarkable. In addition to the interplanetary scale, Penn State also has researchers working at the microscopic level to discover the knowledge that will improve lives for future generations. Here's another short video to describe a very promising collaboration.
Every year in the U.S., over 40,000 people are affected by leukemia. What if we could reduce that number to zero? At a weekly informal faculty lunch about two years ago, Sandeep Prabhu, an Associate Professor of Immunology and Molecular Toxicology here at Penn State, briefed his colleagues about the research he and his team were up to. Bob Paulson, an Associate Professor of Veterinary and Biomedical Sciences, was there.
When Sandeep was talking about his work, you know, it was interesting. It wasn't what I do.
At that time, he didn't say anything, but then he came across this article.
I showed up in his office with this paper in hand.
So, he came running to me with that paper.
Well, I kind of said, "This is what you work on, right?"
And that is the beginning of what could well be a possible cure for leukemia. Dr. Paulson is studying the stem cells that cause leukemia. Dr. Prabhu is studying how fish oil is changed into bioactive molecules by cells in our bodies. One of those molecules is called J3. When they teamed up and treated the leukemia stem cell with J3, they found that it does something no one expected.
This is the first time we have shown that cancer stem cells can be targeted.
What it does is that it tells them to die.
And that targeting is important. Stem cells tend to hide during conventional chemotherapy. They're nearly impossible to kill. Initial investigations indicate that J3 tells the leukemia stem cells to destroy themselves and leaves the healthy cells alone every single time. In the Petri dish and in mice, the leukemia cells die and do not come back.
I'm cautiously optimistic. Right now, I'm saying, you know, we have cured it in mice.
Currently, the team is studying the compound on human cells in the lab. Once proven there, next steps include human trials. Doctors Paulson and Prabhu say they're excited and ready for what lies ahead, and what began simply enough with a question amidst pizzas and PowerPoint presentations. And yes, they still attend that faculty lunch each week, because you never know where inspiration will come from.
It's one of those nice times in science where you do an experiment, you immediately know what the next experiment to do is, and we're rolling, you know? There's no looking back.
Penn State. Inspiring Collaboration.
Experiences with outstanding faculty, ambitious research projects, and real-world applications enhance the career opportunities for our students, and despite difficult economic times, we've had excellent news from the job market. Consider that nearly 350 employers attended our 2012 Spring Career Days. That's a 6% increase over last year. Penn State's People-to-People Career Fair, focusing on service, wellness, and recreation opportunities, had more than twice as many registered employers as last year. And with 48 school districts registered to attend our Education Career Day next week, the employment prospects for our students continue to be strong for the future. Penn State's commitment to research and education in Pennsylvania is also contributing to the larger economy. In the recent Senate Appropriation Hearing, our Philadelphia Senators brought up the impact of Penn State's leadership in the energy innovation hub at the Philadelphia Navy Yard. Launched 18 months ago with a $129 million federal grant and an additional $30 million from Pennsylvania, this project is pioneering new technologies and tools to make buildings more energy-efficient and creating new jobs in the Philadelphia area. We expect this economic engine to continue for many years to come. I've pledged to lead this university with openness and better communication. To that end, we recently launched an openness website with links to updates, budget information, frequently asked questions, contracts, and other resources. The site has had nearly 10,000... The site has had nearly 10,000 visitors and seems to be facilitating a greater flow of information to our constituents. We're also moving forward on the implementation of Judge Free's preliminary recommendations, which fall into five categories. They include, first, strengthening policies and programs involving minors. We will provide more clear and specific guidance to staff and others who interact with children, including enhanced background checks and abuse awareness training. A thorough review of Policy AD 39, which deals with minors involved in university-sponsored programs or programs held at the university, is already well underway. Second, prompt reporting of abuse and sexual misconduct. At regular intervals, we will send the university community reminders, updates, and notices to underscore the importance of reporting misconduct and identifying ways to report. This includes enhancing the visibility of the Office of Internal Audits Ethics Hotline. Third, compliance with CLERI Act's training and reporting requirements. A new full-time CLERI compliance coordinator will soon join the Office of University Police and Public Safety. We will also use outside experts to provide CLERI Act training. Fourth, administrative reforms. We're finalizing the job description and search committee for a Director of University Compliance, who will coordinate and oversee the vast array of compliance issues throughout the university. The board is also working to define the functions of the Subcommittee on Audit and reexamining the board's oversight responsibilities. And fifth, athletic department's security arrangements. As Judge Free recommended, the Compliance Office in Intercollegiate Athletics will add an additional staff person. We're also developing a procedure to ensure that the university immediately retrieves keys, access cards, and all other university property from individuals who are not formally associated with the university. We're pursuing several additional initiatives to address Judge Free's recommendations, and will keep you and the university community informed as details emerge. Moving on, we're currently in what many sports fans believe to be the sweet spot of the spectator season, with winter teams competing in their respective championships while spring teams are beginning to hit their stride. A few highlights include: The Lady Lions won the first Big Ten Championship since 2004, and players Alex Bentley and Maggie Lucas were named First Team All-Big Ten. The fourth-seeded women head to the NCAA Tournament to face 13th-seeded Texas El Paso in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, this Sunday night, I believe it's at 5 o'clock. Coquise, Washington, was honored for her leadership, being named Big Ten Coach of the Year and is one of 10 finalists for the National Coach of the Year Honor. The wrestling team defended their Big Ten title and is currently ranked number two in the country. As the 2011 NCAA Champions, the Nittany Lions will be competing to defend their title -- in fact, they're doing it right now -- and this weekend in the 2012 NCAA National Championship. The men's gymnastics team is also ranked number two in the country. And last week, men's gymnast Miguel Pineda was named a recipient of the 2012 Wayne Duke Postgraduate Award for Achievement in Academics, Athletes, Extracurricular Activities, and Leadership. I might add, he has a 3.98 GPA in Biology. The award is an annual scholarship recognizing one male and one female Big Ten senior student athlete pursuing a postgraduate degree. Now from development comes a gift story that is both remarkable and inspiring. Hiroshi Hamasaki graduated in December 2011, and just weeks after receiving his master's degree in Geosciences, he wanted to thank his advisor and professor of geochemistry, Hiroshi Omoto. Rather than just sending an email or a text like so many others, Hamasaki gave a $100,000 gift to establish the Geosciences Research Fund in honor of Dr. Omoto in the College of Earth and Mineral Sciences. Hamasaki, a native of Japan, said the gift reflects his appreciation for the support and mentoring he experienced during his three years of study with Dr. Omoto. It also speaks to what Hamasaki described as the strengths of Penn State: the sense of community among students, dedication of faculty, and world-class research. He said, "Penn State changed my life. I learned not just academics, but also gained a broader perspective. I am proud to be a Penn State alumnus, and the easiest way to show my appreciation was with this donation." TJ and John, we don't expect quite that soon.[920.00][920.00](Laughter). I also wish to recognize the remarkable achievements of the dedicated Penn State Hershey Development Team. There has been a strategic expansion of staff, and through their efforts, this division has just reached $200 million in commitments for For the Future, the campaign for Penn State students. This achievement, over five years, represents $41 million more than was raised during the Seven-Year Grand Destiny Campaign for the Medical Center and the College of Medicine. This wonderful success to date has been made possible through a focus on securing major gifts, including 17 gifts of $1 million or more, the engagement of physician and scientist partners, and the implementation of a strategic prospect management process. In addition, we're very grateful to the Rocco and Nancy Ortenzio Foundation for the $3 million commitment to establish the Rocco Ortenzio Chair of Physical Medicine and Rehabilitation. The endowed position will enable the institution to recruit a nationally-recognized leader for its newest department as it addresses the growing need throughout Pennsylvania for physical medicine and rehabilitation. Hershey's Development Team was also instrumental in realizing the dream of the new freestanding Children's Hospital building, which will open later this year. This ambitious and important project was made possible by more than $66 million in private philanthropy. Finally, a few words on what is unquestionably the largest and most incredible student-run philanthropy in the world. In February, the 46-Hour Penn State Dance Marathon set a new record, raising $10.7 million for the Four Diamonds Fund at Penn State Hershey Children's Hospital. That brings the total thon (thaw) since 1977 to more than $89 million for the kids. This continued growth is a testament to the organization, creativity, and leadership of everyone who unites in the fight against pediatric cancer in the Commonwealth and around the world. We'll invite the overall chair to our May meeting so we can recognize her in person. To close my remarks, I'd like to share a short video that focuses on the Four Diamonds Fund and thon. I think it does a beautiful job of showing the spirit of thon in the entire Penn State community. I hope you enjoy it, and after it's finished, I'll be happy to take your questions.
They did some very aggressive things at Hershey, but it was, you know, one of those brushfire things out of control, and there's nothing they could do.
Well, I took care of that young man, the Millard boy, when he was diagnosed with this cancer, which was unfortunately a very aggressive cancer.
The day he died, we got his doctor and a businessperson in the hospital and said, "We want to start something that will relieve the financial burden of families that have a child with cancer."
Not only did the Millard family move on this, but D. Lee Backenstoss was very important in setting this up. Dr. Backenstoss was a family physician here, and he's the one that was able to establish all of the funding mechanism and where the money would go and what it would support, not just for taking care of children, but also for these support services like social service and research and the professorship, the Four Diamond Professorship. And I think that this has given a lot of identity to this place, particularly among young people, because almost every high school in the area has many thons that raise people for the Four Diamonds. I think that's an extraordinary institution.
To see all of that energy and emotion and dedication and love and, you know, have you ever been to a thon? It's outstanding. There's nothing like it. We worked hard in the early days to get the thon going, you know? But it was Penn State students in 1977 when they took us on, and they're the ones that really put life into the thon.
The Four Diamonds Fund has been very supportive of the research effort at Children's Hospital. The Four Diamonds Fund has funded the Four Diamonds Pediatric Cancer Institute, and as part of this institute, we have several endowed chairs, which allow individuals in those chairs to perform state-of-the-art, nationally-funded research. And this guaranteed base of income allows me to take chances with my research, to look in new directions, explore new ideas, and it's this sort of thing which will allow the development of new careers.
I had one young boy last year nearly sent me to the floor in tears, but he came up to me and he said, "Hi, my name is Mark someone." He said, "I'm alive because of you." I thought, "That's pretty heavy stuff, Buster."
Just a few of the outstanding things that are happening at Penn State. Chair Peets, I'd be happy to take questions.
Rod, thanks for that great report. It certainly puts things in perspective and shows that we have an awful lot to be proud of. One specific question about the enrollment numbers. Obviously, the applications continue to rise into record numbers, and we know that over the last couple decades, the quality of our student body has increased. What are you finding with the applications this year? Have we continued to move upward or at least hold the line with this high level of quality of students?
The pool this year, the undergraduate pool, looks almost exactly the same as last year. There may be a couple of points up in certain SAT categories, for example, but GPAs are holding right on with what they have been, which has been a very high level. At the graduate level, department heads and deans are telling me that they're seeing the best pools of applicants that they've seen. One of our programs typically takes about five doctoral programs a year. They indicated that in a normal year, they have about 90 applications. This year, they had 145 applications for five slots. So the graduate, as I indicated, the applications are up, the quality is very high, and of course, all of the -- there really is no growth in terms of the number of students at the graduate level overall. In terms of resident programs, all of the net new growth is in the World Campus. As you heard, the number's substantially increased in the number of applications there, and we expect enrollments as well. The World Campus has really accounted for almost all of our net growth over the past decade, and we expect that that trend will continue for quite some time into the future.
How many students are enrolled in the World Campus full-time, and how many total students are involved?
Couple of ways of looking at that. One is the total number of course enrollments. We have about 40,000 course enrollments right now. Many of them are not otherwise registered at Penn State in resident programs. We have some of our students who are full-time resident students who also take one or more courses through the World Campus. But if you look at unique enrollments, in other words, students who are not part of any of our campus or college residential programs, it's about a 10,000 head count.
You know, this also could be a reason why the campuses are down a little bit, because maybe the people are now enrolling in the World Campus, so it could be part of the reason.
I expect that we will continue to see a trend toward more of a hybrid model, where students at all campuses, including University Park, will take an increasing number of their credits in a fully online environment through the World Campus or courses that are offered by particular colleges. So I would expect that that trend is really just taking off. So we'll see more hybrid learning. We'll see, for example, at the campuses, more students using the opportunities of the World Campus to fill in the curriculum. And I think you're absolutely right. A lot of the reduction in the number of master students at the various campuses is accounted for by the growth in the online World Campus.
Rod, what's going on with enrollment at Dickinson, both on the University Park campus and also in Carlisle?
The applications to law school nationally, as you've probably been reading, have dropped off very, very significantly. We are experiencing that as well. Of course, we rode a very significant wave upward. Even with the reduced level of enrollments, we're at still more than double the number of applications we were receiving before we adopted the two-campus-one-law-school model. We also have to make sure that in this realm of a more competitive environment that we're in, that we also maintain the quality of the students coming in, because there are a number of different elements that go into determining the ranking of law schools, which tends to be relatively important. The rankings, once you get outside of the top 50, tend to be relatively volatile, and a change in one particular variable can actually move the rankings quite a ways. Placement is one area. Bar passage is another area, where a relatively small change can move you up or down. So we're working very hard, as we always do, to attract the best possible caliber of students that we can to our Dickinson School of Law. We give students the choice as to whether they prefer to enroll at the University Park campus or the Carlisle campus, and it's really their preference that determines the relative balance between the two campuses.
Rod, with regard to the compliance officer, do you have a timeframe for when you anticipate hiring someone for that role, and is that going to be a nationwide search?
Yes, it will be a national search. We expect to have the job advertisement on the street within about 10 days. We have identified a search firm we are going to work with, and we want the best possible, highly experienced individual to take over that leadership role.
Will there also be a search committee formed for that?
Yes, there will.
Just quickly, Karen. Rod, you commented on the fact that you're watching the state budget discussion, very important, of course, for our purposes, but our current year, we had a significant change in appropriation from the state, and we had to make a number of changes in the cost structure, productivity levels, to make sure we could keep tuition affordable as best we could. How are we doing against this year's budget? Are we able to live within our means from this year's budget standpoint?
We, of course, had an $11.4 million cut, which was spread through various parts of the university, the largest chunk, obviously, through our educational and general budget. And... And we've really dealt with that by coming up with that $11 million, $11.4 million in cash and putting it in reserve. The way this will work is that in the final payment of the year that we receive from the Commonwealth during June of the fiscal year, assuming that freeze stands, that amount would be subtracted from our appropriation. Obviously, if things improve a great deal, it would be added back in. But we have dealt with that by coming up with half of that money through central reserves and half of the money by going out to the various units and asking them to come up with the cash. So we didn't feel, given the stress, that the units were under the financial stress, that we could really expect them to bear the full burden of that, especially inasmuch as we received news about the cut almost halfway into the fiscal year. So we really felt it was appropriate to help out centrally as well.
Rod?
Good. Thank you. Okay. One of the great things about coming to Hershey is our exposure to the changes that are happening here, challenges and opportunities at the medical center. So Dr. Paz, will you join us again at the podium, this time for an update on what's happening at Hershey?
Thank you, Chair Peets. Pleased to give an update on the Penn State Hershey Medical Center. I'd like to begin with a snapshot of the Penn State Hershey Medical Center and our College of Medicine today, which will give you some idea of the scope of what we do and also our level of integration. As the only academic health center in central Pennsylvania, we serve a population of approximately 4.5 million people. We are the only facility in the entire Commonwealth accredited as both a Level 1 trauma center for both adults and children. After state government, we're the largest employer in this entire region. And as is the case with the 100 or so academic health centers across the nation, we have a four-part mission of education, research, patient care, and community service. And while most of our peers are located in large urban areas, Penn State Hershey Medical Center is relatively unique in both its highly integrated organizational structure and the geography that we cover. All of our 9,000 employees play a vital role in our mission. But I'd like to mention a few new members of our leadership team. Dr. Carol Freer is the new chief medical officer for the medical center. Ms. Sherri Kaywater is our new chief nursing officer. Both were appointed to these roles this year. Dr. Robin Wittenstein joined us in August of 2011 as the chief operating officer of the Penn State Hershey Health System. Both Dr. Freer and Wittenstein are Penn State alumni. We'd also like to welcome two new department chairs as well. Dr. Jim Broach, who joined us from Princeton University, is the new chair of Biochemistry and Molecular Biology and also serves as the inaugural director of the Penn State Hershey Institute for Personalized Medicine. Dr. Aaron Loukotcher, our new chair of Microbiology and Immunology, came to us from Emory University School of Medicine. Both of them are internationally recognized scientists whose research has been continuously funded by the NIH for decades. Ultimately, our mission as an academic health center is to train the next generation of healthcare providers. And while our medical student education and residency training program is often the focus of attention, it's important to note that we offer a wide range of educational programs, including clinical training for Penn State nursing students as well as a growing array of new graduate programs at both the master's and the doctoral level. We've added a number of new academic programs over the past six years, including a Master of Homeland Security program launched in 2007 that has grown into a popular World Campus program. We've added several new degree programs this year, including a new Masters of Public Health program, as well as a clinical training component accelerated second bachelor's degree for nursing students. Other new programs that will be enrolling first-year students in the next several years. Our Physicians Assistant Master Degree Program is scheduled to enroll its first cohort of students in 2014 and is part of an ongoing effort to meet the healthcare workforce needs of the Commonwealth. The new dual MD/ MBA program offered with the Smeale College of Business is the first dual-degree program offered through our new regional medical campus at University Park. The regional campus at University Park is more than just a new academic program. It enables us to offer a wide range of academic and clinical training programs while also expanding clinical services we offer in the Center County region, improving access to healthcare for Penn State faculty, staff, alumni, and retirees, and for others living in the region. The regional medical campus is also creating new opportunities for research collaborations, including in areas of cancer research and healthcare delivery between the University Park and Hershey campuses. And in addition to that, offers third- and fourth-year medical students the opportunity to complete their medical education in state college with the opportunity to hopefully one-day practice in this region as well. We're recognized as a leader in innovative approaches to medical education. Penn State College of Medicine was one of seven prestigious medical schools selected to participate in the New Horizons Program sponsored by the Carnegie Foundation and the Joshua Mace Jr. Foundation to develop interprofessional curricula for training medical and nursing students. This is a collaborative effort between the College of Medicine and the School of Nursing. And the focus is on teaching medical students and nursing students to work together as a team, enhancing safety and quality of care. And you'll have an opportunity to hear more about that in detail later this afternoon. Each year in March, our graduating medical students learn where they will complete their training on match day, when the national residency matches are announced. Match day happens to be today. So if you heard some loud cheers coming from the other side of Hershey earlier today, it was the sound of our medical students celebrating as they opened their match envelopes and learned where they'll be spending the next three to seven, and in some case, longer years of additional training beyond medical school. Where MDs complete their residency is a strong indicator of where they will practice medicine. And we are enormously pleased that 27% of our graduates will remain in the Commonwealth for the residency training. 11% will actually stay here at the Penn State Hershey Medical Center. Compared to other Pennsylvania medical schools, a significantly higher percentage of our MD graduates remain in Pennsylvania to practice medicine. Training doctors who will serve our community is central to our mission. And a study that was conducted by Dr. Fitzhugh Mullin and his colleagues, published in the Annals of Internal Medicine in 2010, ranked medical schools according to how well they fulfill a social mission. These rankings were based on the percentages of graduates who practice primary care, the percentages of graduates who work in health professions shortage areas, and the percentage of graduates who are underrepresented minorities. Penn State College of Medicine ranked 29th out of 133 schools nationwide and in the top three in the Northeast United States. I'm especially proud to note that we are ranked ninth in the nation overall for the inclusion of underrepresented minority students. Our students, therefore, I believe, have a very strong passion for community service, which is evident in programs like Lion Care, a student-run medical clinic for the homeless in Harrisburg. Four years ago, our medical students launched a community cleanup day known as Kiss Hershey Back that has since become an annual event involving hundreds of volunteers from throughout the community. Our faculty and staff share our students' commitment to service, including medical missions as well as other less traditional forms of outreach. For instance, two years ago, our faculty and staff led the successful establishment of a new farmer's market here in Hershey that emphasizes wellness as well as support for local agriculture. Our recent wellness efforts included outreach at the Pennsylvania Farm Show, where our staff volunteered time to perform health education and screenings. Over 1,000 people had their blood pressures taken at the farm show this year. And we're partnering with other organizations to advance health in the region. At a CPR training event held last month at Hershey's Giants Center, 300 people received CPR training and many others took part in health education and screenings. Hershey Entertainment and Resorts donated the use of the Giants Center, and we received support from other entities here in the community. Another important component of our mission is research. Funding for research at the College of Medicine has increased, as you can see on this slide, over the past six years and topped $105 million this year. This is in spite of increasing competitiveness at the National Institutes of Health. In 2007, 21% of all NIH project grant applications were funded. In 2011, that percentage has dropped to about 17%, meaning that on average, a researcher who has devoted a considerable amount of their career to prepare for submitting a grant has about a 17% chance of success. Those are daunting statistics. Last year, roughly 70% of our total sponsored research was supported by the NIH. Every NIH dollar we receive translates into more than $2 of benefit in the surrounding community. We've also been successful in securing support from other funding sources, including foundations, nonprofit organizations, and industry. And we're particularly fortunate to receive state funding for research through the CURE program created in 2001 to allocate a portion of the tobacco settlement funds to biomedical research and infrastructure. Penn State has benefited from the flexibility the CURE funds provide to give the opportunity to develop strategic initiatives, attract new faculty, like some I mentioned earlier, and better serve our community. This funding has allowed us to recruit and support world-renowned investigators who have brought substantial new research funding to the Commonwealth and who are making significant contributions to development of new knowledge that will help advance the diagnosis, treatment, and cure prevention of many diseases. Last year alone, Penn State Hershey leveraged its CURE funding to secure an additional $26 million in funding from the National Institutes of Health to support our investment in clinical and translational research. We remain hopeful that this funding remains dedicated to biomedical research, as it was originally intended. We've established a number of new Centers of Excellence in the recent years, including institutes that combine research and clinical missions, such as our Bone and Joint Institute, our Neuroscience Institute, and our Eye Center. Our Clinical Simulation Center is recognized as a national model for training students and practicing clinicians in ways that can improve patient safety. Our Global Health Center coordinates opportunities for our faculty and students to take part in medical missions, international service, and educational exchanges. That is something that more and more prospective students are looking for when they choose a medical school or health profession school. Our newest academic department, Physical Medicine and Rehabilitation, was formed in 2010 and is based at the Penn State Hershey Rehabilitation Hospital, a partnership with Select Medical. And the Penn State Clinical and Translational Science Institute is one of only 60 federally funded NIH centers in the nation focusing on accelerating the translation of research discoveries into improvements in patient care. The Penn State Hershey Melanoma Center, developed with the philanthropic support of the Foreman Foundation, is leading translational research and clinical treatment of this most deadly form of skin cancer. And our most recent additions are the Penn State Hershey Center for the Protection of Children, formed late last year, and the Penn State Hershey Institute for Personalized Medicine, established this month. We're investing resources in technology transfer initiatives that can transform these discoveries from the lab and the clinic into innovations that can improve health and also stimulate our state's economy. We've already had a number of startup companies connected to the Penn State College of Medicine and our medical center. And we've also succeeded in attracting new companies to Hershey. The list here includes some of our faculty startups, including Alaputis Vision Science, Apogee, Clonor, Melanovirus, and Keystone Nano, as well as companies that have chosen to locate here because of the advantages of our proximity that our campus offers in terms of biomedical research cores and infrastructure. Most recently, a New Zealand company known as Pacific Edge announced that it would locate its U.S. operations here, and it expects to create over 100 jobs in Pennsylvania over the next three years. Earlier this month, the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development awarded us an almost $500,000 D-2 PA grant to support executive and residence programs that match scientists with experienced business leaders who can provide guidance and assistance in launching startup companies. This program has already proven successful in helping one of our faculty members, Dr. Gavin Robertson, launch his company, Melanovirus, to develop therapies for advanced melanoma. In volume and in scope, the clinical enterprise, our patient care enterprise, is the largest component of our mission and provides a foundation for our research and educational infrastructure. Our patient care activities have grown in key areas, such as surgical cases and visits to our emergency department. Hospital admissions have not grown as rapidly for reasons that include the fact that our hospital is often full and that there's also, unfortunately, a significant number of "observation days." These are days that patients who are already admitted to the hospital but whose insurance later reclassifies them as not being an inpatient but an outpatient are reclassified after the fact. So in many ways, the numbers are staying steady over the past several years. But at the same time, as you saw on the earlier slide, there's a significant trend towards more and more outpatient care. And as you can see here, outpatient visits are continuing to increase at a very steady rate, reflecting the changes in how healthcare is being delivered, not only here in this region, but literally across the nation. The next slide shows our medical group outpatient sites that existed in 2006, only six short years ago. And as you can see, the demand for outpatient services has grown significantly and with that, the number of sites that we provide care. In addition to three new clinical sites in Hershey, we've opened and expanded several other very large practice sites and locations, including Camp Hill and Lancaster and Redding over the past several years, with many of these sites offering both primary care and multiple specialty clinics. All told, we now have 58 clinical practices across this region. Our network of clinical and academic affiliates has grown even more significantly. At the start of 2006, we had just a handful of major hospital affiliates, six in all, as well as an outpatient surgery center and endoscopy center that were the beginnings of our Penn State Hershey Health System. Today, that number has grown to 17 affiliated hospitals spread across a wide region in Pennsylvania. These affiliations provide additional educational opportunities for our students and give more people access to the resources of our academic health center through partnerships with local community hospitals and regional health systems. Our Penn State Hershey Health System has grown to include both the Pennsylvania Psychiatric Institute, a joint venture with Pinnacle Health, the Penn State Hershey Rehab Hospital, a partnership with Select Medical, and Horizon Healthcare Services, a home healthcare company in partnership with three other hospitals in the region. Technology is further expanding what we can offer to our partner hospitals. In coming weeks, we'll be announcing a new telemedicine program that will give emergency departments at partner hospitals real-time access to consultations with Penn State Hershey experts in neurology and neurosurgery. And that will allow for immediate evaluation of stroke patients using a secure video connection. Because when it comes to stroke, time is brain cells. So this initiative shows the power of technology and partnerships to save lives and improve the quality of life for stroke patients throughout central Pennsylvania. Programs like this exemplify how Penn State Hershey, as an academic health center, can serve the healthcare needs of the entire region. We're frequently recognized as a leader in the use of electronic health records as well. And we've been recognized as one of the nation's top 25 connected healthcare facilities six times, most recently this past year. Electronic records don't just replace paper records. They enable us to actively identify ways to improve the quality and safety of care. And that's why over the past six years, we've invested over $100 million in healthcare IT. We're now in the process of rolling out an electronic health record to all of our 58 outpatient sites. Next Tuesday, we'll launch a new web-based patient portal called My Penn State Hershey Health, offering pilot enrollment for use of patients in four state college outpatient clinics. The portal provides patients with a secure online private access to their personal electronic medical records. Patients can manage their appointments, review their medical records, and exchange secure messages with their healthcare team as well as review selected test results online at the convenience of their own home. The patient portal is one component of the meaningful use, a provision of the federal healthcare reform legislation which provides financial incentives to hospitals and physicians to use electronic medical records in ways to improve the quality, safety, and efficiency of care. of care. Clinical activity and growth is closely linked to financial performance, and I'm pleased to report that the Medical Center continues to perform well financially. That's important because the Medical Center's operating margin plays a central role in supporting the College of Medicine and our academic activities. Each year, a large portion of the Medical Center's operating margin is used to support medical students and graduate students, as well as graduate medical education and laboratory and clinical research, as well as other aspects of our academic mission. Especially now, when other sources of support for academic programs are threatened, such as federal support for graduate medical education and residency training and state support for medical education, it is vitally important for our financial performance that we remain clinically strong. The return on investment for this transfer is enormous. It ensures that the next generation of healthcare professionals is well-trained and that we can conduct cutting-edge research to discover new treatments and cures. One of the financial challenges we face is the increase in the amount of uncompensated care, charity care, and bad debt that we provide. Over the past decade, the amount of uncompensated care we provide through charity care and bad debt has increased steadily, and in the past two years, we've seen dramatic increases in the amount of uncompensated care we provide. Maintaining a strong financial performance in the face of this trend is vital so that we can continue to meet the needs of those who come to us for care, no matter what their ability to pay. We also reinvest a significant portion of our margin into capital improvements, including new and renovated facilities and equipment needed to keep us at the leading edge of patient care, research, and education. This slide shows the trend towards our capital plan spending over the past several years and the reinvestment of our dollars into our facilities. The growth we've seen over the past decade is also driving us to expand our facilities and to better serve the region. The financial margin helps to provide the support for these new and renovated facilities. Our facilities have grown tremendously to keep pace with the demand for care, and once we open our new children's hospital, we'll have increased our square footage by over 50% in just six years' time. And that figure only includes our own Hershey campus. It does not include other locations, such as the Pennsylvania Psychiatric Hospital, the Rehab Hospital, and many of the outpatient clinics we've added. And these are just some of the photos of some of these new facilities that have gone up and showing the increase in square footage from roughly 3 million square feet of space just on this campus to over 4.5 million square feet of space. We've also renovated over a half a million square feet on the Hershey campus to build new inpatient beds, new operating rooms, new educational space, such as our Clinical Simulation Our Penn State Hershey Children's Hospital will open later this year, as you heard from President Erickson, with a grand opening scheduled for November 2012. This state-of-the-art building is designed with family-centered care in mind, and generous philanthropic support from many sources has helped make this building a reality. We've been extraordinarily successful, as you heard from President Erickson, in raising philanthropic support for our missions. Private philanthropy supports all aspects of our mission, not just new facilities such as the Cancer Institute or the soon-to-open Children's Hospital, but also teaching, research, patient care, and, very importantly, scholarships and financial aid for students who increasingly graduate with significant amounts of debt. And as you heard, last year, we surpassed the $200 million mark in progress towards our $300 million campaign goal. So you've seen this picture before, and you've seen the video, the amazing new records totaled from THON through the Four Diamonds Fund, which goes to the Penn State Hershey Children's Hospital. But while you've seen the numbers and you've seen the video of the dancers, you may have not had a chance to meet any of our Four Diamonds families before. So I'd like to conclude by introducing you to the Broda family. Michael, who is a Four Diamonds patient, his mom and dad, Gail and Mike, and his sister Elisa are here with us today. The Brodas live here in Derry Township, and I'd like to introduce them to all of you. Michael, maybe you could stand up with your family. Michael Broda was a 14-year-old high school freshman in the spring of 2008, when he was first diagnosed with Hodgkin's lymphoma. Many of you know this is a very treatable cancer in most patients. Unfortunately, Michael was one of the 1% of Hodgkin's patients whose disease did not respond to the usual first-line treatments. And after three months of chemotherapy and another three months of radiation, Michael was still battling cancer. He underwent a stem cell transplantation, spending almost his entire 10th grade in our hospital. Through it all, Michael's family found comfort and reassurance in knowing that the Four Diamonds Fund was there for them. Gail has described it as "a huge safety net," that meant that they didn't need to worry about bills that their insurance wouldn't cover, allowing them to focus on allowing Michael to get well again. The family was grateful for the many services supported by the Four Diamonds Fund, including a dedicated pediatric oncology social worker, as well as music therapy at our children's hospital. In fall 2011, Michael relapsed again. He's currently undergoing chemotherapy, taking a new drug that has just been approved, and he is responding well. Now 19 years old, Michael is a proud ambassador of our Four Diamonds Fund at the Penn State Hershey Children's Hospital, even as he continues his fight. His band played at THON this year as a way of giving back to the dancers. He's taken classes through Penn State's world campus, and he plans to attend Penn State Harrisburg next year. Michael, thank you to you and your family for being with us and for letting us share your story. As a Broda family story tells us, and the video you saw earlier illustrates, the Four Diamonds Fund enables us to provide superior care to all children who are battling cancer at our children's hospital, to provide comprehensive support to those children and their families by paying for all medical expenses for their cancer treatment, not covered by insurance, and by connecting the children and their families to a caring community which provides essential emotional and social support, and to fund innovative research to find groundbreaking new treatments and cures for childhood cancer. Ultimately, families like the Brodas are why we are here, to provide exceptional care, to conduct the research that leads to better treatments and cures, and to train future generations of health professionals who will carry on this proud tradition. Thank you all so much for the opportunity to update you on the Penn State Hershey Medical Center.
Thank you again, Michael and the Broda family. Thank you for joining us. And do we have any questions for Hal?
I'm interested in the two institutes that are the most recent on the list that you put up there. One was the Protection of Children and Personalized Medicine. Would you be willing to elaborate on those two?
Be pleased to do that. The Penn State Hershey Center for the Protection of Children was developed in December as a response to the tragic events that we're all too familiar with last November. We're very fortunate to have among our faculty at our Penn State Hershey Children's Hospital one of less than 200 board-certified child abuse pediatricians in the country, Dr. Andy Trolle. And with her and with several other faculty and healthcare workers, we quickly assembled a group to move forward in providing advocacy services, clinical care, direct clinical care, as well as opportunities for research and education. This group is working collaboratively with other Penn State colleges, including the Dickinson School of Law and faculty at University Park, to advance this important initiative. And one of the first areas of emphasis is actually in direct patient care, direct clinical services. So we're pleased and delighted to be able to move forward. We're having our inaugural event next Thursday, and we're pleased to have Dr. Dick Krugman, who is the vice chancellor and dean of the University of Colorado, nationally-recognized expert in the field of child abuse, be our keynote speaker. The other institute, the Penn State Hershey Institute for Personalized Medicine, which we announced earlier, is a basic science research institute led by Dr. Jim Broach, who we recruited from Princeton, which emphasizes looking at underlying causes of disease, particularly genomic causes of disease, and then identifying, excuse me, treatments and cures that are tailored to that specific disease. Right now, we know that many of the treatments we offer patients in general don't work in some cases because of a person's genetic makeup. One example I've used over and over again is when I see patients in pulmonary clinic on Wednesday afternoons, I know that in about 20% of the cases, they will not respond to standard asthma medicine because of their genetic profile. If we know what their genetic profile is, we'll stop using it in that 20% and we'll use a drug that will help them and will be cost-effective. And that's the promise that personalized medicine offers. It's about individualizing care based on basic science research. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hal, with regard to, I know we heard on our tour that they had shared with us that every year, there's about 100 new patients, children that are diagnosed with cancer that are treated here. With the Four Diamonds Fund, is that available to all families that are here?
Yes. Yeah, and I should have also mentioned that through THON and the Four Diamonds Fund, the Pediatric Oncology Center, which is an outpatient center in the children's hospital, was funded in part by THON to, in fact, make sure that we have a facility for children and their families to have active treatment. It's the only outpatient facility in the entire children's hospital building, and it was through the generosity of the THON students, through the Four Diamonds Fund, they were able to do this.
Dr. Paz, the tour was excellent today. As Stephanie indicated, it's really good to see the project partway done. You can get a sense of the enormity of it and all the technology and construction work which goes into it, and we wish you good luck with the final stages and with the grand opening. When it's finished and fully staffed and operating, how many children are going to receive care in the new facility that would either have not received care at all or had to have gone someplace else, on an annual basis or monthly basis?
So, we have around 1 million children in the central Pennsylvania region that we provide care to, and we have the opportunity to receive care. And one of our focuses has been to build a state-of-the-art facility that literally matches the state-of-the-art programs that have been available for some time. What's unique here in this region is that this hospital provides everything from the most basic primary care and preventions. I gave you one example of that before through our Center for the Protection of Children, all the way through to highly areas of subspecialized care. This is a Level 1 pediatric trauma unit. We run a very large neonatal ICU, for example. We have transplant programs and highly specialized surgery programs. So, these are services that will be available. The bed count in this new building is actually about the same as the current bed count at the children's hospital on the seventh floor. And that's because we recognize that the way the care is being delivered is changing rapidly, and less and less patients need to be in the hospital, more and more of the care is being provided in the outpatient setting. So more and more of our specialty pediatricians, be they cardiac surgeons or nephrologists, just about any specialty you can think of, are actually providing care out in the community, many now at other community hospitals, to bring that care as close to home. The children that will be in this children's hospital are unfortunately the sickest of the sick, and that's, I think, really, at the end of the day, any parent would only want their child to have to be in the hospital if they needed those kind of services, and otherwise would prefer to have them home. So that's really the vision for this children's hospital, and it really emphasizes where we've put our investments in these programs over the past several years.
One more question.
Doctor, when I look at the growth, and perhaps my evaluation is wrong, but it appears that the Hershey Medical Center over the last 10 years has grown three and a half to four times. If that's accurate, do you see a limitation on how much growth you can manage going into the future? I mean, that's an amazing number for any operation.
It's a great question. I have to try to give you a very brief answer, Keith. The way we will deliver care in the future will be very, very different than it was 10 years ago, and even than it is today. It will be about a continuum of care, and it really reflects that one slide I showed with all the affiliated hospitals and all the practice sites. Many of our graduates live here in central Pennsylvania, and many of them are in private practice or work at other hospitals. We want them to be successful doing what they're doing. But we want to add value to their practices and the hospitals they work at by being able to create a continuum of care so that patients can stay as close to home as possible and only come back here to Hershey if they're seriously, seriously ill. That way, no one has to leave this region to go to some large metropolitan area, be it in Baltimore, or Boston, or New York, or wherever, to have access to care, because diseases like pediatric cancer, heart disease, stroke, don't travel well. And if we can keep our patients close to home, then not only are we improving quality of lives, are we helping families where now many, both parents are working, where there are extended families all living together. We create real opportunities for improved access and higher quality as well. So, the changes you're going to see are going to be much more about creating this continuum of care and focusing on both outpatient services, hopefully shorter and shorter stays in the hospital, and post-acute care in places like our Penn State Hershey Rehab Hospital, or receiving home infusion through our Horizon Home Infusion Company, where we'll go to your home and give you the treatment there, because we know that's where patients would much rather be. Thank you.
Question.
Thank you.
Okay, proceeding with our agenda, we'll continue by having the reports of the standing committees. As noted in the agenda, there are several changes proposed to the current standing committee structure, and we'll discuss those a little later. As a result, however, the Committee on Campus Environment has not met, and there is no report. Moving on to the Committee on Educational Policy, in the absence of the chair and vice-chair of the committee, I will serve as the acting chair in my capacity as chairman of the board. I'd like to note that a quorum of the committee is in attendance at this time, and I will not call the roll. Information is contained in the agenda regarding undergraduate and graduate programs. Additionally, information was included regarding the proposed reorganization of the Department of African and African-American Studies and a change in the name to the Department of African-American Studies in the College of the Liberal Arts. The renamed Department of African-American Studies will more accurately reflect a focus on African-American topics, while the African Studies Program will be created as a separate budgeted unit. A resolution was included in the agenda, and I will entertain a motion from the Committee on Educational Policy for its adoption. Thank you, Sam. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thanks. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. The motion's carried. Continuing with our education of all things Hershey, we're very excited to hear about the education of our students and interdisciplinary health science education. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Richard Simons, Vice Dean for Educational Affairs, and Dr. Mary Beth Clark, Assistant Professor of Nursing and Hershey Campus Coordinator, to review the subject matter with us.
Thank you, Chairwoman Peach. It's a pleasure to be here with you this afternoon. I just returned about an hour ago from our Match Day celebration over at the Hershey Country Club, where I handed out the envelopes to all of our students who will be graduating. It's always a great time, and thanks to the Penn State Alumni Association, we can have this celebration at the Hershey Country Club. It used to be in Lecture Room A, so this is a great improvement. So, it's a really privilege to be with you this afternoon to give you a little taste of interprofessional education, which is really a growing and exciting trend in medical education. And as you will hear later, I'm happy to report that Penn State is an early adopter and a leader in this initiative. So what is interprofessional education? Here's a definition from the World Health Organization. "When two students from two or more disciplines learn about, from, and with each other to enable effective collaboration and improve health outcomes." It seems like this is a no-brainer, but I will tell you, traditionally in medical education, medical students were trained in silos, nursing students were trained in silos, and if they met, it was by sheer happenstance, and this is changing. The goal of this initiative, which is really becoming more and... The goal of this initiative, which is really becoming more and more common around the country, is that if we train students together deliberately, we believe that they'll be more likely to work together in practice. And I don't think I have to tell anybody here that healthcare is really a team effort more than ever, considering the growing nature of our populations and the aging population and the complexity that we're seeing in our patient, both in the outpatient setting and inpatient setting. This is a graph that, just a picture that depicts, and I'll come over here, that depicts our healthcare. If you look at this graph, this chart says this is a fragmented healthcare system. The goal is to have interprofessional education, which will lead to collaborative practice. And at the very top, we're going to have a very integrated healthcare system. And so, this aspect of interprofessional education, and this doesn't mean just nursing students and medical students, this means nursing students, medical students, physician's assistants, pharmacy students, physical therapy students, all working together in their education, so they'll be ready to practice together when they're out in the real world. This is from the Institute of Medicine. These are the five competencies that are important for all healthcare professionals. And I think at Penn State Hershey, we are on target on many of these. Utilize informatics, which we're doing with our electronic health record. Employ evidence-based practice, which we are attempting to do in both our medical student and nursing education curriculum. Provide patient-centered care has always been a goal of the Hershey Medical Center. We're focusing now, more than ever, on applying quality improvement, but in the center is working in interprofessional teams. Today, I started my day by rounding on 14 patients in the inpatient service, and I will tell you, it's more important than ever that we have a team of individuals working together to provide care for our patients. There has been an effort nationally. Many of the groups have come together, the Association of American Medical Colleges, the professional organizations in nursing, in pharmacy, and other organizations have come together to define what we call core competencies for interprofessional education. They include values and ethics for interpersonal, interprofessional practice, clarifying the roles and responsibilities between nurses, physicians assistant, physicians, interprofessional communication, and teams and teamwork. So, in addition to learning all of the fundamental basic science, we now are trying to make sure that our, all of our healthcare students are learning these important interprofessional And so, the mandate now is that it's no longer useful for health workers to be professional. In the current global climate, as this slide says, health workers also need to be interprofessional so that we can work together collaboratively. So, this interprofessional education is a growing area of intense research in medical education and nursing education. And I'm going to turn now the podium over to Dr. Clark. She's going to describe a few initiatives here at the Penn State Hershey Medical Center. We're really making some strides in this area of interprofessional education. Dr. Clark is one of our nurse educators here. She really directs and leads our Hershey Medical Center campus for our nursing students. So, Dr. Clark.
Good afternoon. Thank you for including us in the agenda today. We're happy to share our work with you. To start out with, the first initiative I'll talk about is the interprofessional curriculum in quality improvement for medical and nursing students. And this initiative came about as a result of a grant obtained by Dr. Paul Hayden and myself from the Institute of Healthcare Improvement and the Josiah Macy Jr. Foundation. What they were looking at was, looking at to see how we could retool education to have it more interprofessional, both from a medical and a nursing standpoint. The request for proposal came out and went nationwide. They wanted proposals from both the School of Nursing and the College of Medicine that could work together on an endeavor. Fortunately, there were about 40 proposals submitted, and Penn State was one of six that was selected to be part of the project. Our goal, basically, was to create and to evaluate an interprofessional curriculum in quality improvement concepts. The sessions in the curriculum had several objectives related to improving students' knowledge of concepts toward quality, safety, and patient safety, providing a foundation for their thinking about clinical issues from a systems perspective, not just an individual perspective, and for realizing the potential benefits of using mixed nursing-doctor teams to solve problems. We actually did these workshops here at Hershey in the Medical Center. We used Junker Auditorium for our site for the sets. The workshops used based, team-based learning, which is a well-established method, and incorporates both small group discussion and large group discussion. It has a high degree of student collaboration, and it's very good at engaging students into the topic that you're trying to cover. This graph, excuse me, I forgot, I should have mentioned this. When we had our teams, we had students that were fourth-year nursing students and first-year medical students. We had a disparity in numbers. We had 145 medical students and only 51 nursing students. So, we divided our teams into, half were medical student-only teams, and the other half were a combination of nursing students and medical students. After they, we went through the workshop, did all of the case studies, as this graph demonstrates, the students participating in the interprofessional groups had a higher perception of the values of teams as opposed to the medical student-only group. In fact, from one workshop until the next, the medical student-only group actually declined slightly. So, I think it further validates that interprofessional education is really the wave of the future. In conclusion, we developed a curriculum in quality improvement and concepts for medical and nursing students. We demonstrated that students perceived an increase in knowledge and attitudes about quality and safety concepts, and that attitudes toward the values of teams improved for students who were on the interprofessional teams rather than just the medicine-only teams. However, even at this early stage of education, attitude differences exist between nursing and medical students that really mirror those that have been shown to occur among practicing physicians and nurses in the clinical settings. So, more work needs to be done to understand the development of these attitudes and the way that we can have an effect on mitigating and navigating these attitudes on an individual This is just a qualitative statement from some of the students that were, that one student specifically, that was part of the workshop, that basically, they, it was helpful for them to come together as students, because they came in with, basically, perceptions that really did not turn out to be as they thought they would be at the end. They basically understood each other more after having collaborated in the workshops. This slide is, it's actually a replica of a poster that had its genesis in the Carnegie Macy Foundation workshop that we attended in June 2010. And what, basically, what this slide shows is that we did an interprofessional workshop, and we looked at not patient safety and quality issues, we looked at end-of-life issues. Because when you look at teamwork of caring for patients who are in palliative care or end-of-life situations, teamwork is very, very essential. What the, this group was a fourth-year medical students and a mix of junior and senior nursing students here on this campus. And what they explored here was the attitudes and the feelings of the students as far as participating in these workshops. They did a lot of qualitative analysis, and actually, brief conclusions were that students emerged from both, they emerged from both medicine and nursing school with role expectations, not only for themselves, but for other members of the clinical team as well. The students felt that the interprofessional education course tended to promote respect between the groups, and also to humanize each other's educational experiences. They seemed to better understand what nursing education is about, what medical education is about, what the similarities are, what the differences are, but yet how they can all work together to make a better health system. For the future, we have to explore transferring this knowledge into the clinical area. And actually, this coming fall, at University Park, there will be an initiative that will have grand rounds, and the participants will be the medical students who are on rotation up at University Park, as well as our graduate nurse practitioner students in the School of Nursing, who will also be at University Park. They're going to have grand rounds, three per semester, and they're going to look at the results of interprofessional education in the clinical setting. So, they're going to start focusing more on the clinical area as we are down here, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Simons to explain.
So, in conclusion, we hope to advance this initiative by identifying and developing patient care units where team-coordinated care is taking place to a very high level, and start having the medical students, nursing students, pharmacy students, and our future PA students interact more, more often. We want to develop more of these interprofessional activities for all of our healthcare learners on this campus, and we also want to develop specific clinical activities, not only inpatient unit, but in the outpatient unit. For instance, we're developing a patient-centered medical home rotation for our medical students, and we'd like to also integrate nursing students. You might ask, why aren't you doing more of this? This seems like such a, an easy thing that you should be able to do. I would say, first of all, we are pleased that we have the support of our Dean of the Medical School, Dr. Paz, and the Dean of the Nursing School, Dr. Paula Malone Nuzzo. Many colleagues at other institutions want to do this, but they're, they don't have the support of their deans like we do. So, we've been blessed with the support of our senior leaders. We need to find teaching place. The only place that we could get the nursing students and medical students together on our campus was in the Junker Auditorium. There's no other place on this campus that would fit our medical students and nursing students together in one room. Scheduling logistics. It's hard enough to schedule our medical students with classrooms. When you try to schedule nursing students, medical students, and physician's assistant all together, it's a real challenge, and we've been able to do that successfully with our medical students and nursing students. And also, in the clinical environment, today I started our rounds on the second floor, and we had patients on the second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth floor. To try to coordinate all of those rounds with dedicated nurses and nursing students is a real challenge. So, there's some very real practical barriers that get in the way. And also, there's a perception among some of our students, perhaps more of the medical students, that this is, quote, "the softer stuff" that doesn't matter as much as the hardcore medical science. And so, those are some of the challenges that we face, but they're not unique to the Penn State College of Medicine and the Hershey Medical Center. All academic medical centers face these challenges. So, we hope that we enlightened you a little bit today on this important education initiative, and I'll turn it back to our chairwoman.
Any questions? Questions from the floor? Okay, you did such a great job. Thank you very much. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Clark and Dr. Simons. All right. There being no other items to come before the Committee on Educational Policy, that Committee is adjourned. The Committee recommends to the full board the adoption of the resolution projected on the screens. As a reminder, the full board is in session. From the full board, may I have a motion for approval? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Now, I'd like to call Chair Linda Strumpf for a report from the Committee on Finance and Physical Plant.
Thank you, Chair Peets. I'd like to note that a quorum of the Committee is in attendance at the meeting. Since our last meeting, the Committee received a briefing on Penn State's capital planning, design, and construction process from Ford Stryker and Lisa Burkey of the Office of Physical Plant. What was particularly interesting, I think, to the Committee was the use of new technologies, and also the role of the Board of Trustees in the process along the way. The other items, I think, that the Committee found particularly interesting was the real need, and you're going to see this later, for some really significant renovations in both our academic and dorm buildings in not only University Park, but around some of the campuses, and you'll hear more about that later. There are several items for information or action by the Committee at this time, and you'll need to have your materials with you. Agenda item one is within regard to the Consent Agenda, which is shown in Appendix Roman numeral 2. And just to remind you, the Consent Agenda are often projects that are under value of $5 million, so that is by consent. So, the only things we're voting on right now are O and P. So, may I please have a motion to approve action items O and P in the Consent Agenda? That's revisions to existing scholarships and acknowledgement of endowments and other major commitments. So, can I have a motion? Second? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Agenda items 2, 3, and 4 are proposed namings at University Park. Agenda item 2 proposes to name the replacement for South Henderson Building, the Health and Human Development Building. Agenda item 3 proposes to name seven structures and the road associated with the new physical plant greenhouse facilities as listed in Appendix 4. And Agenda item 4 proposes to name the new lacrosse field, the Penn State Lacrosse Field. Sounds logical to me. So, may I please have a motion to approve Agenda item, well, if we named it the Field Hockey Field, it wouldn't make much sense. May I please have a motion to approve Agenda items 2, 3, and 4? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Agenda items 5 and 6 are proposals for appointments of architects for renovation projects at University Park. Agenda item 5 is with regard to Stidle Building, and Agenda item 6 is for Mueller and Whitmore Laboratories. At this time, I'd like to call on David Gray to present these items. David?
Thank you, Linda. Stidle Building is located in the historic core of campus near the intersection of boroughs and Pollock Roads. This 86,000-square-foot building was built in 1931 with an addition added in 1938. Stidle Building was designed by Charles Clouder, the architect who has had the greatest impact upon the architecture of Penn State's core campus. It houses the College of Earth and Mineral Sciences, Department of Material Science and Engineering, one of the premier departments in this field in the world. This research-intensive discipline requires that undergraduate students participate in independent research projects. Therefore, Stidle Building spaces serve two primary functions, teaching and research. Most of the outdated labs in Stidle no longer have the utilities or functions needed for modern material science. The original laboratory benches are at or near the end of their useful life cycles. Cramped conditions have led to improvised research in office spaces. This is a privacy issue when students meet faculty or when faculty are discussing sensitive research. Some areas of the building are supplied with insufficient electrical capacity. Some electrical equipment in Stidle is no longer manufactured. Used or repurposed existing equipment is used for repairs, but this is a serious concern for the future. There is an imminent need to replace failing mechanical systems in Stidle. For example, water supply lines are leaking more and more frequently. Due to faulty water supply valves, discreet areas of the building cannot be shut down for repairs. Last summer, a leaking faucet in Lab 12 required a shutdown of the entire building water supply. Heating, ventilation, and air conditioning units are failing or unable to provide the environment necessary for modern-day material science research. Some research is delayed in the summer because of humidity or temperature fluctuations. Some comments from researchers in Stidle Building highlight the conditions. Quote, "My program has been hampered by the lack of adequate facilities and lab space, which costs us time in a fast-paced field and puts us..." which costs us time in a fast-paced field and puts us at a disadvantage for attracting new federal and industrial funding," unquote. Robert J. Kumpf, currently Chief Operating Officer of Plextronics in Pittsburgh, says, quote, "For Penn State Material Science and Engineering to be fit for the future, it is important that the students have access to the best equipment and the best facilities. The current situation with Stidle Building does not meet this criteria," unquote. Gary L. Messing, head of the department, notes that, quote, "The Department of Material Science and Engineering is at a tipping point with half of the faculty, ten, located in Stidle Building, researching retirement age, or reaching retirement age in the next five years. Our ability to recruit the best young faculty will have a, a long-lasting impact on whether we remain one of the best materials departments in the nation and world," unquote. The goal is to renovate Stidle Building and yet to preserve the architectural significance of the structure. The design team will reorganize new lab and office areas into suites called research clusters that are more open, collaborative, and conducive to current and future program goals and objectives. These clusters will support a variety of material science and engineering research. Modern labs and utilities will improve our competitiveness in winning research contracts and recruiting top faculty and students. The building's mechanical systems will be replaced, and utility infrastructure to the building will be upgraded, including connecting the building to the campus chilled water system. In keeping with our commitment to environmental sustainability, we expect that this facility will attain LEED certification. The renovation of Stidle presents several unique opportunities to advance Penn State's national contribution to material science and engineering research. To attain this goal, the designer of these labs must have the required advanced experience and a proven portfolio. Expertise in the phased replacement of the infrastructure systems is required. A unique challenge is to accomplish that while the building is partially occupied to avoid interrupting ongoing research. Finally, the architectural team must have proven expertise in the renovation of historically significant buildings such as Stidle. Based on these considerations, we recommend the appointment of EYP Architecture and Engineering PC of Albany, New York. This team will validate the program, develop a schematic design and a phasing strategy, and will complete designs for each phase as funding is available. Each phase will be advanced for approval when construction funding becomes available, and the following slides show examples of the firm's previous work. The first example is the Patricia E. Harris Center for Business, Government, and Public Policy at Franklin and Marshall College in Lancaster, Pennsylvania. This is an interior shot of the Metcalf Science Building renovation at Boston University in Boston, Massachusetts. And this is the Silver Center Complex at NYU in New York City. The Subcommittee on Architect Engineer Selection recommends the appointment of EYP Architecture and Engineering PC of Albany, New York, as architect for the design of Stidle Building renovations at University Park. The next architect appointment is for Mueller and Whitmore Laboratories renovation. Mueller and Whitmore Laboratories are located near Petit Paternal Library between Curtain and Pollock Roads. Mueller Laboratory, a seven-story structure built in nineteen sixty-five, houses the Penn State Biology Department, known as one of the top research biology departments in higher education in the world. With an enrollment of over a thousand students, the biology major is the largest and most popular in Penn State's Everly College of Science. In addition, the biology courses are popular for general education requirements. The biology department instructs over eight thousand students annually within the instructional lab spaces in Mueller. Whitmore Laboratory, a three-story building constructed in nineteen fifty-three, houses chemistry laboratories for undergraduate introductory and advanced studies. Almost seven thousand students from nearly all colleges at the university are taught in these spaces annually. Biology has had a long-term space deficiency in the number and quality of undergraduate biology teaching laboratory spaces in Mueller. This has limited the number of sections offered, overcrowded current labs, and adversely affected the types of courses and experiences needed for modern biology instruction. The original laboratory benches and related equipment are at or near the end of their useful life cycles. Our students must currently squeeze between tables and equipment, often sitting on top of tables because there's no space to collect data or gather around low tables leaning awkwardly to perform experiments. Because of inadequate facilities, students with interests in medicine and other health fields must travel to a community college in New York to work in a cadaver laboratory. A comparison with University of Minnesota revealed that we offer about eighty-six percent of the biology lab sections per year as they do, but have only nineteen percent of their facilities. Whitmore Laboratory has not materially changed since its construction in nineteen fifty-three and shows the wear and tear of intense use. Presently, all instrumentation activities take place in one room that is shared by all first-floor lab classes. This places a tremendous pressure on students to complete their required work in a limited timeframe. Because there are no fume hoods in the first-floor teaching labs, students cannot set up projects with significant vapors. As noted by Dr. Joseph Kyler, Director of General Chemistry Labs, quote, "A general chemistry lab experiment as common as dissolving copper and nitric acid cannot be safely done in our labs. Typical general chemistry labs will have a bank of hoods, but we have none. By comparison, the University of Michigan has twelve hoods for each lab of twenty-four students," unquote. The mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems in both buildings are deficient. Electrical service to the lab benches is not robust enough to support the equipment that today's science requires. The priority for the Mueller renovation is to improve existing instructional biology laboratories and to create new undergraduate teaching labs for the base courses on the first floor. Anatomy and physiology teaching lab spaces will be relocated and expanded, and the new cadaver lab will be, will be created that will support biology and other science disciplines such as nursing and kinesiology. In addition, adjacent support spaces will be improved. All existing antiquated laboratory equipment will be replaced, such as autoclaves. The priority in Whitmore is to renovate all undergraduate instructional labs. The scope of this renovation includes building system upgrades such as HVAC, mechanical and plumbing in both Mueller and Whitmore. This project presents several unique challenges that require specific experience and advanced expertise. First, the design of state-of-the-art science teaching labs that include the flexibility to remain cutting-edge for decades is required. Second, significant experience is required in the phased integration of a complex network of new mechanical systems into an existing building, which is a very large portion of the project's scope. And finally, these renovations must be accomplished while the building is occupied, uh, full of students to avoid interrupting teaching and experimentation in science. Based on this criteria, we recommend the appointment of StanTech of Butler, Pennsylvania. This team will validate the program, develop a schematic design and a phasing strategy, and will complete designs for each phase as funding is available. Each phase will be advanced for approval when construction funding becomes available. The following slides show examples of the firm's previous work. The first example is the Doherty Hall renovation at Carnegie Mellon, Carnegie Mellon University in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. This is the exterior of Gerstaker Science Hall at Hiram College in Hiram, Ohio. And this is a chemistry laboratory renovation at Marist University in Pukepsi, New York. The Subcommittee on Architect Engineer Selection recommends the appointment of StanTech of Butler, Pennsylvania, as architect for the design of Mueller and Whitmore Laboratories renovation at University Park. Thanks, Linda.
Any questions for David?
The resolution regarding item five is included in your meeting agenda, and the resolution concerning item six is shown on the screen. Well, the Committee on Finance and Physical Plant recommends adoption of the resolutions regarding item five and six. May I have a motion, please? Second? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item seven is a proposal for final plans and authorization to award contracts for the addition and renovation of South Halls at University Park, and I'd like to call on David Gray to present this item. David?
Thanks, Linda. South Halls and Redifer Dining Commons are located near the intersection of College Avenue and Shortledge Road. The four buildings that make up the South Halls complex provide housing to more than a thousand students, including half of Penn State sororities. They were built in nineteen fifty-seven and have had no significant renovations or changes since that time. The facilities are clearly outdated and no longer meet the expectation of today's students and parents. Deferred maintenance projects have been delayed in anticipation of a planned renovation to South Halls. For example, windows have begun to fall, uh, to fail at an increasing rate despite our best efforts to repair hinges. In several cases, uh, the windows break from their mounts. Over twenty-five percent of the window units in the student rooms have, uh, have had one of their windows permanently secured shut. In cases where both windows fail, we, uh, replace the entire unit at a cost of fifteen hundred dollars per room. To date, we have spent approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to repair or replace these failing windows. Over the last two years, the area has experienced numerous failures to the domestic hot and cold water lines and the heating system. Just this past month, one of the heat exchangers providing service to several build, buildings in South Halls failed. We have been close on two occasions to losing domestic water to one of the buildings due to the aging water lines. If we were to lose domestic water to a building and it could not be patched, we would need to displace over two-hundred-and-twenty students and spend approximately half a million dollars to replumb the entire building, which would take several months. We average approximately fifty thousand dollars each year to patch and repair this system. Because of leaks in plumbing lines and problems with shower drains, bathroom floor slabs are failing. If the overall renovation project is delayed, even for a year, we will need to seal the floors at a cost of six thousand dollars per bathroom. This would be a very temporary fix to keep water from deteriorating the floors further. When we have bathroom failures, given the location of the plumbing, we need to take the adjacent student rooms offline in order to complete the repairs. The conditions at South Halls are impacting the comfort of current students and the perception of prospective students and their parents. Negative feedback from visiting parents during a spend-a-summer-day event has become typical. For example, parents have said, "I can't believe that the quality of the dorm we visited is typical," and "The rooms appeared uninviting, small, old, and depressed," as well as "Freshman housing was so unsatisfactory, my child may not even apply based on that alone. Worst dorms we have seen in six universities." The renovation of South Halls has been put on hold multiple times due to the uncertain financial climate. In March of last year, you appointed the firm of Barton Mallow to design the full renovation of South Halls, including new energy-efficient systems and new roofs. This renovation will create thirty-two living-learning communities and will enable us to move all of our sororities into one com- uh, complex. The addition of air conditioning will enhance our summer housing and conference operations. As a part of our strategic facilities plan for housing, we have developed a plan to install security cameras at key building access points. In addition, we plan to incorporate wireless card access into each room within the residence halls. Therefore, this renovation project provides the most cost-effective opportunity to implement our security plan into South Halls. As you know, the South Halls complex in Redifer Commons is considered the least attractive and least accessible portion of our border with College Avenue. This project provides an ideal opportunity to improve this highly visible town gown edge. The entire site drops an average of thirty-five feet from McKean Road to College Avenue. Because of this topography, the north side of the ground floor in each building is below grade, while the south side of each ground floor is above grade. Each of the four existing buildings of, is composed of a pair of residence halls. Each hall includes a ground floor and four upper floors. Our presentation will begin with the ground floors, first Howler Lyons and Ewing Cross, followed by Cooper Hoyt, and ending with Hibbs-Stevens. Our tour will continue with a typical first floor, which is common to all buildings. And finally, we'll quickly tour a typical upper-floor layout which will be implemented for all upper floors in all existing buildings. We begin here with the ground floors of Howler Lyons and Ewing Cross because they are mirror images of each other. Most of the mechanical storage and support spaces will be located in the below-grade section of the ground floor. A lounge or extra bedroom and a two-bedroom staff apartment will be on the south side, which is in the above-grade section. The remaining spaces include bathrooms, elevator, stairs, and support spaces. The ground floor of Cooper Hoyt contains twelve bedrooms, a lounge or extra bedroom, and similar support spaces. A portion of the ground floor in Hibbs-Stevens is unexcavated. The occupied portion of the floor will include two staff apartments, a lounge, and all of the building's primary mechanical and support spaces. The first floors of all existing buildings in South Halls will be configured in a similar fashion. All main entrances lead to the lobbies and sorority meeting rooms. Each wing will contain fourteen bedrooms and reconfigured private bathroom clusters, as well as, as storage, support spaces, elevators, and stairs. Each sorority will have a sorority suite configured, uh, configured with a kitchenette, dining, and a living area. The second, third, and fourth floors of all four buildings will be identical. They will include thirty-four bedrooms, individual bathroom clusters, and sorority suites. To meet the current industry standard, Residence Hall gang bathrooms will be replaced with individual bathrooms. Piping and ductwork for new building mechanical systems will be accommodated in these new enclosures on the building exterior. A comprehensive study of Redifer Commons operations recommended, in addition to create private dining spaces for sororities and other student groups and to simultaneously accommodate overflow dining during peak times. The study also recommended relocating offices to increase back-of-house and prep spaces required to handle current volumes of diners. Accordingly, this will locate more appropriate functions along College Avenue to enhance the building's architectural appearance. The addition to the ground floor of Redifer Commons will include new entrances and lobbies to make the building more accessible from College Avenue. The expansion will also improve operations at the loading docks. The first-floor addition will include two additional dining rooms and administrative offices. Seventy-four beds will be lost as a result of the renovation of the four existing buildings. Therefore, we identified the opportunity to construct a new residence hall on the site. The new building will be forty-five thousand square feet with two-hundred-eleven beds and a hundred-and-eight rooms. There are four floors above the ground floor. To take advantage of the sloping topography, the ground floor mechanical, storage, and support spaces will be, uh, located on the north side, which is below grade. Twelve bedrooms will be located on the south side, which is above grade with windows. Some bedrooms will be designed with ADA and hearing-impaired accommodations. The lobby, kitchen lounge area, elevator, and stairs complete the plan. The main entrance on the first floor leads to the lobby, lounge, and stairs. This floor will have twenty-four bedrooms with clusters of individual bathrooms. Remaining sp- uh, spaces include a telecom room, elevator, and stairs. Floors two, three, and four are designed the same with twenty-four bedrooms, a commons, and individual bathroom clusters. Support spaces in the elevator will be located in the core with stairs on the ends. The main entrances to all of the buildings will be connected to the new sidewalk layout. New portals and the connectors between Redifer Commons and the residence halls will improve access to South Hall's neighborhood from College Avenue. The design-build team Barton Mallow has prepared renderings of the renovated South Halls, as well as the additional building, from these angles. This is a residence hall today. This is a rendering of the renovated hall with the existing brick and stone cleaned and repainted and all windows and roofs replaced. New ductwork and piping will be located in these enclosures that will be wrapped with a stone veneer to complement the existing stone on the building. A close-up view of an existing entrance and a rendering of a new main entrance and sorority lounge with wraparound porch. This is Redifer Dining Commons from College Avenue today, and a rendering including the new addition to Redifer Commons and the improved connector between Redifer and adjacent residence halls. The new residence hall will be located at the intersection of Shortledge and McKean Roads. It has been designed to complement the existing South Halls, uh, buildings with matching brick and stone veneer. The total project is expected to come in at ninety-four-point-one million dollars funded by a combination of housing and food service reserves and debt to be repaid by housing. Completion will be December two thousand fourteen. The entire project will be accomplished in phases. The first phase, which includes the new building and the renovation of Howler Lyons, will begin this spring. We will begin the renovation of Ewing Cross next spring and Cooper Hoyt in January of two thousand fourteen. The Redifer Dining Commons addition and Hibbs-Stevens renovation will start in the spring of two thousand fourteen. We anticipate completion of the entire project by the end of two thousand fourteen. We recommend approval of the final plans and authorization to award contracts for the South Halls renovation and addition at University Park. Thank you.
David?
Yes, David? On the line.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, so I, as I understand, the funding will all come from housing and food service funds. Is that correct?
Housing will co- uh, six million dollars will be drawn from the Housing and Food Service Reserve Fund. The balance will be funded through, uh, through a bond issue, the proceeds of which will be, will be paid for through the housing and food service fees that are assessed to the students.
Other questions? Stephanie?
Um, David, with the new, uh, dorms that are going to be, uh, constructed, the bedrooms, are they singles or doubles or mixture? Any idea?
Ford, do you happen to know, are they single or double bedrooms? Doubles.
John?
Uh, Ford may know this better, but this, this the nature of it, looks to me like what was done at North Halls, you know, four or five years ago. Is it a similar kind of renovation? Is it a similar kind of renovation in terms of extent and end result? Would that be a good example for us to think of?
Yes, I think it is a good example for you to think of, a good pattern that we're following.
I have a son who was in one of the North Halls dorms the first year they were open as a freshman, and it was really well done. I think the overall scheme turned out very, very well, so good luck.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Keith?
Just to clarify, if I understand this correctly, there will not be an additional burden on our maximum loan load. Is that correct, David?
That is correct. The debt service load is a virtual wash. We'll be rolling off over the next three fiscal years existing bond issues that virtually is a match to the new debt service that would be required for this facility. So, virtually a wash, so there will be no negative impact on our debt ratio at the university, which is well within parameters.
Thank you.
Ed?
Joe?
Joe, do you have a concept of the Housing and Food Service Reserve Fund? So, six out of 20.
Thank you very much, David. May I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 7? Second? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an update on the status of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania appropriation request, which President Erickson addressed in his earlier report. Unless there are further questions on that, we'll move on to the next agenda item. So, any other questions on the subject? Seeing none. Agenda Item 9 is a photo report on selected construction projects, and I'd like to call on Ford Stryker to present this item. Ford?
Good afternoon. Today, I'm going to report on one project that's under construction and six recently completed projects. So, I want to start with the Children's Hospital, which I realize everyone just toured. And we're making very good progress, as I think you saw today. The current budget estimate for the project is $202 million, and we anticipate the building will be completed in September. And as Dr. Paz says, we hope to -- we plan to begin seeing patients in December, on December 3rd. So, I'm going to show a few exterior shots of the building, because going through the inside, I'm not sure everybody got to really see how the outside looks. So, Matty, if you want to move ahead here. This is a view from the Cancer Institute of the curved front of the building facing University Drive. Insulation of the glass curtain wall system that forms this face is almost complete, and there's some metal panels that are over the building there in the blue exterior sheathing at the top of the photo that will complete the finishes on this side of the building. The work on the exterior of the building is near complete, and the completed limestone columns on either side of the waterfall wall on the east end of the building are shown in the center of this picture and in the rendering. There's some granite that's yet to be installed, and that'll be installed at the base of the limestone panels, and that will complete the face, which is really the most significant feature of the building. Now, this, moving around to the south side of the building, this shows a completed metal panel system on the south. In the foreground is the bridge walkway to the University Physician Center, and to the left of the picture is the Cancer Institute. Overall, the project's 68% complete. Now, I'd like to briefly review six completed projects. So, the first project is the Support Services Building here at Hershey, which was completed in October of last year. The building will receive equipment and supplies for distribution throughout the hospital. The next photos will show the project from the north and the south. And this is a close-up of the northwest end of the building with the glass-enclosed stairway in the center and the service elevator shaft to the right. Moving around to the other side, this is the southwest side of the building. To the right is a door to the vehicle service bay, and there are eight loading docks are to the left. Now, in this photo, you can see that the material or equipment comes from the loading docks, and it's conveyed in on the left in this photo. And there's a material-moving system, and a box will go from the trucks through the receiving area to this high-bass storage area. When material is needed in a hospital, it's moved there through a tunnel, which is accessed by the freight elevator. The tunnel between the Support Services Building and the hospital is shown on this map and in this photograph. This is a completed building, as seen from the BMR Building to the north. Moving to Penn State Burks, the New Gauge Technology and Business and Innovation Building was completed in October of last year and came in a million dollars under budget. This is the main entrance to the new building. It'll provide space for business, information sciences and technology, engineering, and hotel, restaurant, and institutional management programs. Inside the main lobby features a sculpture called "The Wave," made of 1,500 reflective glass squares. The retail portion of the café is next to the lobby on the first floor, and directly above is the graphics multimedia lab. The new lecture hall seats 60 students and is equipped with interactive technology. This is a Harold Frimer Engineering Wing that features three mechanical engineering classrooms, a research lab, and a computer design studio. We are expecting this project to receive LEED Gold Certification. The Swift Building at Penn State Du Bois was built in 1964 and was in desperate need of renovation and upgrading. The project was a complete renovation of the building, which increased classroom space, improved accessibility, and greatly reduced energy use. The old windows were replaced with a high-performance insulated window system for energy efficiency. An elevator was installed to enable full access between the main and lower floors. All interior finishes were upgraded, and this commons area received new furniture. The double doors straight ahead open into the new computer lecture lab, complete with new smart boards and technology to provide an up-to-date, quality educational facility for students. The Swift Building renovation was complete in time for use in the fall semester. The renovation at the Petit Library to create a technology-rich, student-centered hub called the Knowledge Commons was recently completed. A new computer lab that's open 24 hours a day during the semester blends the best in digital and multimedia technologies. The new design provides open collaborative spaces, group study rooms, and multimedia facilities. The shape of the furniture, as well as its arrangement, facilitates group interaction. There are 96 new workstations that are almost always fully occupied. This section of the Knowledge Commons provides students 12 quick-access reference stations with electronically adjustable tables. The living wall adds an environmental component with its lush green plant material. At University Park, the addition to the Moore Building is complete. It was the first phase of a two-part program to upgrade facilities for the Psychology Department. This department offers baccalaureate and science degrees in psychology, and approximately 900 students enrolled as psychology majors and almost 550 students pursuing psychology minors. The Moore Building addition has enabled the Psychology Department to co-locate their programs and significantly upgrade the quality of space and expand their programs. This is a view of the building from the Donald H. Ford Building. The reflective white roof was installed to reduce energy use. The main entrance atrium features a decorative wood and metal wall panel that provides ventilation between the existing building and the new addition. Located on the first floor, a new interactive computer lab and seminar rooms provide the students with much-needed workspace. Administrative offices and a conference room are also now available on the first floor. Research efforts in the Psychology Department's Child Study Center focus on children's emotional development and emotion regulation. This is the second-floor research observation room with two-way mirrors to facilitate behavioral research from the control room. In the control room, the researcher observes and collects audio and video data. Specialized recording equipment can be tailored as needed for each individual research project. The third and fourth floors have a total of 78 labs and breakout rooms, as well as faculty offices and seminar rooms. This view of the west facade of the addition gives you a good idea of the completed structure. In total, 73,000 square feet of new space was created. We anticipate that the building will be LEED certified. Now, Millennium Science Complex. The Millennium Science Complex is the second-largest academic building with the most comprehensive research facility at University Park, and it's complete. Move-in began in early September and will continue throughout the rest of this academic year. This is a view of the completed building and the overall site. As a reminder, the Life Sciences Wing is to the left, and the Material Sciences Wing is to the right. Cutting-edge life and material sciences research will be conducted in this building. The discoveries made here will significantly advance our knowledge of science and will have a profound impact on industries such as medicine, agriculture, transportation, and energy. A tour of the building will be scheduled for the trustees, and you'll have an opportunity to learn firsthand about the building from the students and faculty who use it. Chair Strumpf, this concludes my report.
Any questions for Ford? Stephanie?
Ford, congratulate you on coming in under budget on a couple of those, but I did see the one, the library was over budget by about $450,000. What is that attributable to?
So, when you're renovating an existing building, sometimes you discover some things you didn't plan on. And one of the things we planned on was the floor in the library had some structural issues that we needed to correct, so we had to apply a little additional money to that to fix it.
Anything else? Thank you. There being no other items to come before the committee on finance and physical plant, we are adjourned. And Chairman Pete, the committee recommends the adoption of the eight items projected on the screens.
Okay. Thank you. Again, the full board is in session. We'll take just a moment to review the items on the screen before us. Okay, lots of items. May I have a motion for approval? Okay, second? Any discussion? Okay, thank you. The motion carries. All right, and it looks as if we do not have a report on legal matters, so we'll move on to the next part, which is about our proposed new committee structure. So, as I noted earlier, we're committed to moving the university forward. The board is also examining our own governance structure to determine whether we can make changes. Yes. Oh, sorry, guys. Oh, I'm sorry about that. Thank you. You have to keep me in line here. So, may I have a motion? We got the motion. Then, all in favor? Okay. Any opposed? The motion carried. Thank you. Okay, let's see. The board's also examining our own governance structure to determine whether we can make changes that would improve our oversight of the university, as well as our accessibility to it. What will be considered today is only the first step, and we envision additional changes as we move forward in the review process. We're proposing that our current committee structure be changed from three to five standing committees and that five subcommittees be established. Revised resolutions were distributed at your place. Everybody should have a description. So, now I'll go through the proposed five committees. The first is the Standing Committee, that will include the Committee on Academic Affairs and Student Life. This committee will consider and report on all matters pertaining to the educational policies and programs of the university, the faculty, instruction, research, and continuing education, student life, and the learning and work environment for students, faculty, staff, and all other members of the university community. Certainly is clearly understood that the committee will need and will seek consultation from faculty, students, and other constituents in its deliberations and in any development of recommendations. That's the first committee. Mary Ann Alexander will be the chair, and I'm happy to report that the co-chair is Peter Corey, who is our student trustee. The Committee on Finance, Business, and Capital Planning, this is committee number two, is to consider and report or recommend to the board on matters pertaining to finance, business, budgets, non-budget expenditures, human resources, investments, trust funds, insurance, real estate contracts, government and private contracts, and grants, fees, room and board charges, and the long-range capital planning and development of the university. This committee will also seek consultation from representative constituent groups as appropriate in the exercise of its responsibilities. The committee will have three subcommittees, two of which are not new. The Subcommittee on Architect or Engineer Selection and the Subcommittee on Finance are already in existence and will continue with current roles and objectives. A new subcommittee will be formed, the Subcommittee on Human Resources, which will be responsible for reviewing our greatest assets, our human resources. This includes the applicable policies and procedures concerning the recruitment, retention, and training of employees, as well as diversity and inclusiveness. Again, it is clearly understood that the committee will need and will seek consultation from representative constituent groups in its deliberations. Committee number three, the Governance and Long Range Planning Committee, will combine those responsibilities formerly performed by the Governance Advisory Group, and will also have a few additional responsibilities. The committee provides counsel and advice to the board in matters concerning the development of strategies, policies, and practices that orient, educate, organize, motivate, and assess the performance of trustees. It reviews all committee guidelines to ensure appropriate and comprehensive distribution of responsibilities, any changes to the expectations of membership and code of conduct for all trustees, recommends candidates for election to membership on the executive committee, as well as the service of a trustee upon retirement. In fulfillment of its long-range planning responsibilities, it will charge and support the chief executive with leading a strategic planning process. The board will participate in that process, approve the strategic plan, and monitor its progress in order to ensure the growth, development, and sustainability of the university for future generations and to achieve its full potential as one of the world's great universities. Again, it's clearly understood that the committee will need and will seek consultation from representative constituent groups in its deliberations. Okay, we're also proposing, and this will be the fourth committee, but let me just say that the other, the two committees I just went over are, Lynda Strumpf is for Finance Business, and the last one I just did for Long Range Planning is Jim Broadhurst, is the chair. So, we're also planning a committee on Audit, Risk, Legal, and Compliance, and I should mention that'll be headed by Keith Eckle. Its role is to oversee the auditing of the university's financial statements and internal controls, and adherence to laws, regulation, and policies that pertain to university operations as set forth more fully in the operating guidelines of the subcommittees. The committee will also consider matters with respect to the identification and management of risks, including financial, material, and reputational. This committee will have two subcommittees, the Subcommittee on Audit, which is currently functioning, and a Subcommittee on Legal, which will focus on compliance and oversight issues as legally or otherwise prescribed, including litigation strategies. And that committee, as I said, is Keith Eckle. So, the fifth and final committee, which is headed up by Mark Dambly, will be the final committee being proposed is Outreach, Development, and Community Relations. In concert with the university's leadership, this group will engage regularly with the institution's major constituents, including the faculty, staff, students, alumni, supporters, relevant state and local government agencies and officials, business leaders, and the public. It will also be involved in educating constituents about the role and responsibilities of the Board of Trustees, communicate the value of the university to all constituents at all locations, and work on the development of short- and long-term communication plans consistent with university priorities. Again, it's clearly understood that the committee will need and will seek consultation from faculty, staff, students, alumni, and relevant state and local government officials in its deliberations as appropriate. While the details of the While the details of the changes were reflected in the agenda, we thought it was important for all to have a clear understanding of the purpose and functioning of each committee. May I have a motion for approval of the proposed revisions to the bylaws and the standing orders of the Board of Trustees? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Keith?
Karen, in looking at the guidelines on Subcommittee on Audit, I'd raise a question on B. It appears that it is written the Subcommittee on Audit would have a dual responsibility of reporting to the Committee on Audit, Risk, Legal, and Compliance, and also to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Capital Planning. I wonder if it would be clearer from an operational standpoint to strike and/or the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Capital Planning.
Yes, I think it would. I think that what we are intending with that audit function is that it goes across not only the numbers in the finance function, but across other functions. So yes, I agree with that.
If it were being ordered, I'd move to strike that final language.
Okay. Anyone have any problem with that? Okay, Paula, if you'll take that note?
Yes.
Okay. So, do I need a motion to approve that amendment? Okay. All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any, I should've said any discussion on that before I asked for all in favor. Sorry, my Robert's rules are not that great. So any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? All right. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Any other, yes?
Just pointing to our meeting. Ed notes what it's on.
Yes. Okay, so now we need a vote on all of the committees. Okay. Yes, more discussion. Paul, do you have more discussion?
Yeah, we have some discussion on the new Subcommittee for Human Resources, whether it would be better to have that report through the Governance and Long Range Planning or the Finance Committee. I mean, how hard would it be to move that one way or the other as we develop that committee?
Okay, can we have some further discussion about that?
Okay. In terms of movement in the future, it doesn't necessarily have to occur here, but we would expect that further refinements as the committees get up, get running, get operational, and you have a better sense of the strategic alliances that you need to make. We would expect that revisions would be made in the next several months, so I would say that it's not necessary to take any specific action at this point in time, but it could be discussed in a future revision if you would like.
John?
Without notwithstanding Paul's comment, I think Trustee Silva says a very good point. We ought to give that some thought about, this is probably the newest activity that's being proposed and developed. You know, those activities were carried out in different, less formal ways, but this would be the newest formal activity, and we need to give a lot of thought to the actual structure and process of that Subcommittee's activities. And then that probably informs us, and it may be by the next meeting or soon, about where it fits most conveniently and most appropriately under the committee structure because it is so new. And I share, I think, some of Trustee Silva's thoughts with regard to the prominence of that Subcommittee and its responsibilities for establishing comprehensive policies in a very important area.
So, any further discussion, or are we saying that we're going to approve, as was stated, with the kind of caveat that we're going to continue to revise and think about the human resources function? Conversely, I guess we could go for approval within the governance function, so let's have more discussion.
I'd just note that these are very significant changes. I believe it will be a learning process for us. I absolutely recognize Trustee Silva's concern in this area. I think we should recognize that we may come back and evaluate changes in a number of the committees and subcommittees as we move forward with operations and gain some experience. So I think we can move forward and approve it, recognizing that we may well have to revisit it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Carl?
I think just by the nature of this whole structure, there is going to be a period of overlap on certain issues that we're just going to have to deal with and share with other committees that we might not be on. I think that's just by the nature of whatever issue we're dealing with, that's bound to happen. So I think that's going to force one committee to really share with other committees on certain matters. But I think Paul's right, too.
Any other discussion? Because what I'm hearing is, let's vote as it was described. Yeah, John?
Just one other comment, I think in support of where you want to take it, Madam Chair, but on the, under the Committee on Governance and Long Range Planning, you'll note item 9A1, I believe, oversight of all committee guidelines to ensure appropriate comprehensive distribution of responsibilities. I think what's envisioned there is what would be traditional, at least in the world that I occupy, where each year, usually, more often if necessary, each committee and subcommittee would review its operating guidelines to determine if they should be changed in some way, and then those would be forwarded to this Governance Committee to be reviewed and considered, accepted, revised, and forwarded to the full board. So I think the structure that we're looking at already encompasses a view that there would be an ongoing and periodic reassessment and revision as necessary.
Yes.
So I just think we should go into it expecting there will be things that we want to sharpen up, maybe something that our experience reveals we don't cover sufficiently or otherwise. So I think what Trustee Silva is talking about is a little more structural, but I think it's accommodated within a structure that we expect to have operating on a routine basis.
Okay. And are you okay with that, Paul?
Yeah, I'm okay. I think initially, I'll probably be spending a lot of time with the Trustee Serma's group and working on the governance issues with HR. Maybe it's time I would dictate, you know, I would fit with finance, so I'm okay with that.
Okay. Any other discussion about it? Okay, so I think what we're saying is with the caveat that particularly for human resources, but possibly to the point of several other points made, possibly with other topics, that we want to approve it with the original caveat that we had with Keith's, that we want to approve it as is, and we'll keep evaluating. It might keep changing, and that's fine with everybody. It will be fluid as needed as we learn more. Okay, with that as a backdrop, may I have a motion to approve? Okay, all, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Terrific. Thank you. Okay. The Corporation for Penn State is a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation organized in 1985 and is tax-exempt under the federal Internal Revenue Code. The member of the corporation is the Board of Trustees, and the annual report is presented in March. Are there any questions about the report included as Appendix 4? Okay. As I noted in January, the election of members of the Executive Committee was deferred until the March meeting so that the results of the January elections were reflected in the proposed membership. Additionally, given the restructuring of the Standing Committees, we've also reflected those changes. The membership includes the positions of Chair, Vice Chair, and Immediate Past Chair of the Board, the President of the University, the Chairs of the five newly-created Standing Committees, the Chair of the Board of Directors of the Penn State Milton S. Hershey Medical Center, and the Chair of the Special Investigations Task Force. The names of the individuals holding these positions are included in the agenda. First, I'll entertain a motion that the number of elected members, including the ex officio members, be determined as 11 for 2012. Is there a second? Okay, all in favor? All right. Anyone opposed? Thank you. The bylaws do require that written ballots be used, and I would like to ask that they be distributed at this time. Yes, actually, those pages were missing, so I'm coming to that. Thank you, David. Thank you. So the following individuals have been elected to membership on the Executive Committee for 2012. Mary Ann Alexander, Jim Broadhurst, Mark Dambly, Keith Eckle, Rod Erickson, Ken Frazier, Ed Hints, Keith Mosser, Karen Peets, Linda Strumpf, and John Serma. Congratulations. Okay, now, we're going to go back to item number eight. Information was provided separately concerning the awarding of the honorary doctorate of science to Stephen Chu at an upcoming commencement ceremony. May I have a motion for approval? Okay, second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, opposed? The motion carries. Okay, now I think we're up to 11. Okay. To follow up on the earlier report of the activities of the Corporation for Penn State, and according to its bylaws, the member of the corporation, again, the Board of Trustees, meet annually for the purpose of electing directors. You have before you a resolution to elect the Board of Directors of the Corporation for Penn State, and I'd like to ask for a motion for approval. May I have a motion? Okay, thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. As a reminder, these newly-elected directors will briefly meet immediately following the adjournment of this meeting in the multipurpose room where we had lunch. Included in your agenda is a resolution providing for the appointment of Keith Mosser as a member of the Board of Directors of the Milton S. Hershey Medical Center. May I have a motion for approval? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you for your time and attention today. I think we're to the end of the agenda. Did I miss anything? I'm a little nervous. Our special thanks to Dr. Paz for hosting our meetings. It's evident that a great deal of time and energy went into the preparations and the presentations. Are there any other matters to come before the board? Hearing none, I declare this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.